One, we have a pretty lengthy city council meeting this evening. So let's go ahead and get started. Madam Deputy Clerk, could you please read the row?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Creighton Smith. Mr. Childs. Mr. Greider.
Here.
Ms. Wilder. Mr. Foyce.
Right, just for the record, Mrs. Creighton Smith will not be at the council meeting this evening for a personal reason. So, all right, if you would join me in a moment of silence, I would appreciate it. All right, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance by John Childs Ward one.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of the United States, the only nation unregarded and invisible of liberty and justice.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with an amendment and an addition on item 11 consent resolutions. That resolution should read approving preliminary plan specifications, form of contract, etc. Setting date of bid opening as May 4th, 2023 and data public hearing as May 15th, 2023 in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023 East End Run and Drive Reconstruction Project Contract Number 1084. And direct the city clerk to publish said notice. And the second is in addition to the consent agenda, item 28, bonds for council approval.
Right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, thank you. We have two proclamations. The first one, I'll ask Paul Hudding to join me for Arbor Week. Right, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation. Whereas trees provide a pleasing environment in Waterloo for the benefit of our residents and visitors, contributing greatly to our positive image. And whereas the optimum reforestation of Waterloo will require public participation and cooperation, resulting in an attractive community. And whereas the management of trees increases the benefits to our community through planting, planting, maintenance, timely removal, and replacement. And whereas the Iowa Legislature has designated the last Friday in April as Arbor Day throughout Iowa. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23 through the 29, 2023 as Arbor Week. So, Mr. Hudding, could you talk about it?
Sure. Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director, our city forester, Todd Deerfield, couldn't be here today. But I do want everyone to know that April 28th is Arbor Day, and it's also Todd's birthday. So I'm sure you'll remember that. Yeah. So Waterloo's been named Tree City USA for the 39th year in a row. And that's largely due to the commitments made here with the mayor and the council to provide funding for tree care in Waterloo. We'll be distributing through Leisure Services 240 trees that have been purchased by area residents, Waterloo residents, for the Plant Waterloo Program. That'll happen on May 4th. These trees have been purchased for $20 each by Waterloo citizens, and that cost is greatly underwritten by the Young Family Foundation. So once again, we thank them for their interest in keeping Waterloo green. Leisure Services will also be coordinating a tree planting on May 5th in Highland Neighborhood Association's area. The residents there have purchased trees through the program I just mentioned and will be assisting with the planting along with Green Iowa AmeriCorps and the Highland Neighborhood Association volunteers. So there'll be a lot of new trees on the streets surrounding in the Highland area. And also 19 trees will be replanted along University Avenue with a Trees Please grant that comes from Mid-American Energy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and Paul, I just want to say, you know, we really take it for granted sometimes, living in Iowa as opposed to other cities, that we have such vibrant trees. And we're really very thankful for our Leisure Services Department that are always thinking about preserving our trees when sometimes we may want to come through with an axe. But we just want to thank you. There's so many environmental benefits to having trees within our community, and it really makes a beautiful city. So thank you for you and your staff and Todd's and all their work in making this Arbor Week very great. So, all right, thank you. All right, next, we have Library Week. So, Mr. David, would you please join us? All right, welcome, Jillian. Right, whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institution for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. And whereas libraries adopt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collection services and partnerships. And whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. And whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd through the 29, 2023 as Library Week. Yes, sir. Tell us about it.
So, Library Week first started in 1958, actually, and it's been going on every year. They have a different theme every year. And so this year's theme is, there's more to the story. And so I just want to, you know, thank you and the council for always being so supportive. Our library has been in this community for more than 100 years, and we continue to try to just serve our people as best we can. I would welcome anybody to come out. You'll always be surprised that we have programs that you didn't even know we were doing, and we're just always trying to get out there and do the best we can, so.
And I remember probably about six or seven months ago, and I think Noel and Randy also read it, and it was an article that we studied at Harvard. And it talked about the role of the library, you know, and the ever-changing needs of the community and how libraries have had to broaden what they do to continue to serve the community. And so, yes, incredible place for information, incredible place for understanding, but you do so much more to meet the needs of our overall community and those within here. So I want to thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank your entire staff of continuing to make sure that you're a beacon of hope and light and information for our entire community. So thank you so much for your efforts. All right, thank you. Right, it is now time for oral presentations, your opportunity to let the council, mayor, and our city staff know what's on your mind. Please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. Going the second time. Counselor, sir?
So, so last summer, this council unanimously approved the creation of the Safe Neighborhoods Commission, which is designed to look at the underlying causes for gun violence, particularly youth gun violence in our community. We've been meeting over the last several months online and with stakeholders across the community, and now we are going to be even more public. And so I want to invite folks to a public forum that we are having next Thursday, April 27th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. This will be at the Jubilee Freedom Center on East Fourth Street. And this forum is an opportunity for members of the commission to hear from folks, whether it's their lived experience with gun violence, their concerns, and their suggestions for solutions as we continue to meet and craft our strategic plans. So I want to invite everyone out to that meeting again. That's next Thursday at the Jubilee Freedom Center from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Anyone else? Just really quickly, it is our event season coming up, whether it is my Waterloo Days, whether it is fireworks, or whatever it may be. But we always use incredible volunteers because you make the difference in all of our initiatives and our programs. So please continue to visit the main street website. Please contribute, continue to visit the, the... Ooh, I forgot, Tavis' old chant, "Experience Waterloo." Wow, but just make sure you get out and you continue to support these organizations because you make the difference, our volunteers.
Let me come here.
Sir?
Thank you. Quickly, just two things for Ward one, or one thing for Ward one. At the end of the month, we will be normally having our award meeting. I have decided that I think we need to do something a little bit more interactive, not getting the attendance numbers that I would like for those. We have, when we had our internet discussion last month, that was fantastic to talk about broadband and how that's coming. So I believe that these need to be a little bit more poignant. They need to have a topic. So we will not be meeting this coming month, so that way I can advertise a topic that we will talk about at the end of May. In addition to that, I am going to start a newsletter. So we will start an e-newsletter for Ward one. It will be called "That One Ward." So you will have the ability to sign up for that newsletter. It will go out every month, and it will inform you of what is going on in our ward, what is happening in specifically Ward one. Volunteer opportunities in Ward one, things to do in Ward one. You will also be able to respond to that. So if you have a question about something there, and you're like, I want to hear more information about this, if you're curious about, around about that may be coming up, or something that might be happening. We can then target our ward meetings based on the questions that citizens have. So I'm hoping this will become more interactive. For those of you that may not have internet access or don't choose not to use the internet, I can take your address down, and I can send you a paper copy of that. So there will be options available. I want to make sure that we can have some more communication happening in this ward. So be on the lookout for that. I'll have an announcement coming out soon to where you can sign up, and then you can get that. One last thing I would like to do is congratulate our police department on getting to 122 out of 123 sworn officers. About a year ago, this council made a decision that was not at a normal time to allot a new plan to hire more police officers. And I've heard that that would not work, but it did, and I'm really proud of our police department for getting to that number. Now we see one more, one more to get to 123 out of 123. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still, we're still, uh...
I guess Scott told that, actually.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Thank you.
A motion to be made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, oral presentation's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of 1A1 bill's payment for April 10th, 2023 in the amount of $2,756,093.99. And for April 17th, 2023, in the amount of $2,089,572.38.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Counselor? Sir?
Did I, could we get Mr. Canute's into the dressing room?
Since that one, uh... It's just a quick...
Jamie Canute, City Engineer, we are going to, I'm asking counsel to go ahead and reject the reconstruction bid that was received by ASPR. It is unfortunately more money than I have in my budget at this point in time. It was about $900,000 more than what our estimate was. And depending upon whether you look at the asphalt or concrete, it was as much as $1.4 million more than what we thought it was going to be. So nothing against ASPR, it's just we all know what gas prices and oil prices are right now, so it's just, just more money than we can afford in the budget. We are hoping to, planning to go ahead and rebid, just seeing none in this year, try to get that done this year. Later this fall, we will go ahead and then bid Broadway, the piece that we were hoping to do this year, and we'll include more that we would plan to do next year. We'll try to add as much as we can in to fit in our budgets. But right now, it's just, it's more money than we have in the budgets.
And that's, and that's, you answered my second question, I guess, because I wanted to know what put San Martin ahead of Broadway. And if you're going to try to expand the scope of work on Broadway, I can understand that because I get complaints on Broadway all the time.
You and me both. And it's, it's in desperate need. It just, the money and the staging for San Martin fit much better with what's available right now. And then next year, this fall, we can hopefully tailor some more of Broadway before it makes more sense. But include what we were planning to do this year, and then do some more that we were hoping to do next year as well. So try to make it a little bigger project.
Because I did, I did relay to some folks in the early, and we'll be starting next year, so just delay by a couple minutes if there's cases and need to keep that folks. Looking forward to that project, thank you. And then, Mr. Bozen, you said something about 11?
Well, no, we haven't.
We've had an amendment, but we're not pulling it off.
Oh, well, he answered that. He was basically curious and I said, this is...
Right, Madam Deputy Clerk, oh, that is an electronic vote. That has been approved unanimously. And I want to just highlight a couple items on here. The motion of recommendation for the appointment of Amy Hanson from our current civil service list to lab tech, waste management. And also the appointment of Cody Wilson to Airport Operations Specialist. And then also the appointment of Jonathan Wilson to Solid Waste Technician in the Public Works Department as well. I think that's, I think that's, is anyone here? Any of the people I named here? All right, and then also we have a new appointment for our Human Rights Commission, and it's Solomon Dizverovic. Are you here? All right, would you please stand? We want to thank you so much for joining our Human Rights Commission. We look forward to your advocacy and your work, and thank you for stepping up to volunteer. All right, let's, let's get started. Number one, all we do, all we have to do is read that one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, for the fiscal year 2023, construction of a fiber-to-the-premise theater distribution and backbone network project contract number 1080, canceling it and rescheduling to May 1st, 2023.
That's just a statement. You don't have to take that as true.
I would say we have to cancel.
A motion has been made with the second, any discussion? Right, um... Let's hear, uh, our votes, so please to cancel to May 1st, please vote. All right, that is approved unanimously by council members here to cancel that to May 1st. Because someone take number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and ask for the airline passenger terminal building HVAC controls project.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on the HVAC system for the airport terminal building? Going the second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Who made that second? Mr. Nichols. And that is a vote. Please give a vote. All right, so to adopt the resolution for the specs that has been carried unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Madam Deputy Clerk?
Our first bidder was Baker Mechanical Incorporated of Ankeny, Iowa. They provided a 5% bid security. Their bid was in the amount of $238,966. Our second bidder was Woodman Controls Incorporated of Urbandale, Iowa. They provided a 5% bid security, and their bid is in the amount of $144,818. Our final bidder was FM Controls Incorporated of Fort Dodge, Iowa. They provided a 5% bid security. Their bid is in the amount of $122,390.
The bid estimate, or engineer's estimate for that was $172,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding bid to FM Controls, Inc. of Fort Dodge, Iowa, in the amount of $122,390. Approving a contract bond certificate of insurance in conjunction with the airline passenger terminal building HVAC controls project at the Waterloo Regional Airport. Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program, project number 3-19-0094-0054, CARES development, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk takes key documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Sir?
I just wanted to mention this. Today's committee is just nice to see this coming up. It's a city we love.
We'll continue to ride that momentum. All right, council vote? Electronic vote? But yes. So that passes unanimously. Thanks, counsel. Number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and ask for the fiscal year 2023 Lace Water Treatment Plant Lift Stations mowing contract.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak towards a mowing contract for lift stations? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, etc., and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions on this item? All right, so that requires an electronic vote. Please share your votes.
I'm asked, well, yes, I didn't get it this time.
All right.
It's okay.
All right, so that was approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct, receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Deputy Clerk?
The bid estimate for this project was $37,000. We received one bidder from Wilson Custom Tree of Cresco, Iowa. Their bid security is 5%. Their bid for option A is $15,920 for mowing and $5,190 for weed control. Option B, $5,520 mowing, $790 weed control. Option C, $2,880 mowing, $900 weed control, and option D, $5,100.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so I'd like to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Wilson Custom Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa, per year mowing slash weed control. Option A, $15,920 and zero... And zero cents.
And weed, weed.
And zero cents slash $5,000, $5,190 for weed control. Option B, $5,520 slash $790. Option C, $2,880, $2,880 and $900. And option D, $5,100 approving contract, their bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year 2023. Race model to get at lift stations mowing contract and authorizing the mayor to execute some documents.
Second.
Right, that motion has been made with the second. Counsel, this is an electronic vote, so please, can you vote?
Yes.
Not sure why you're not getting it.
I was logged in, yeah. I'll leave and I'll...
So that carried unanimously, council members. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 complaint mowing with complaint snow removal contract. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four complaint mowing with complaint snow removal contract.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to snow remover and complaint mowing? Going a second time?
Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? The, the question was, um, since we didn't receive, uh, one of the options, um, would there be a problem with it overlapping in the contract? So basically, what we have here, is there any problems that you foresee because we didn't get any information? Can you state that for the public record? You've, you've reviewed, I mean, basically, you've reviewed the bids and you've talked to the contractors and our code enforcement has talked to the folks, so uh, split contract, everybody is agreeable from the rest.
Yes.
And we've done this, we've done this over a year previously. We accept, we've accepted for, um, portions of it for one contract and portions for another.
Thank you very much. Dale and Marty, uh, this is. Yeah, that's Marty Peterson too, city attorney, complaint mowing director. All right, uh, I don't even know where, okay, so that is an electronic vote, so, uh, council could use.
Yeah, I've logged out twice in this time.
All right, thank you. So that passed unanimously. It's the, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to receive, file, and instruct city clerk to read bids.
Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, all right, Madam Deputy Kirk.
We received from our first bidder, P and J Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa, they received, uh, provided a five percent bid security for option A, one thousand five hundred dollars, option B, one thousand five hundred dollars, and they did not bid option C or D. Our second bidder was B and B Lawn Care Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided a five percent bid security. Option A, two thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars, option B, two thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars. Option C, seventy-four dollars and forty-nine cents, and option D, one thousand four hun- one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bids to P and J Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa, option A, fifteen hundred dollars, option B, fifteen hundred dollars per occurrence, and to B and B Lawn Care, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, option C, seventy-four dollars and forty-nine cents, and option D, one hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents per minute hour, approving the contracts, bonds, and certificates of insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four complaint mowing with complaint snow removal contracts and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. Council, uh, electronic vote, please.
Aye.
I don't have either, but aye.
But thank you. That, uh, passed unanimously. There we go. All right, uh, number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Let them move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing that is for a request by Park's Property Management LLC on behalf of Pella Windows and Doors for a site plan amendment to construct a new thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-five square foot commercial building in the BP Business Park District located south of four zero four one Horse Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment, um, on this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, so I move to close the public hearing and receive and file oral and written comments and the recommendation of approval of the planning, programming, and zoning commission.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Okay, so I move to ref- receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance amendment to the ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash for approving a request by Park's Property Management LLC on behalf of Pella Windows and Doors for a site plan amendment to construct a new thirty-one thousand one hundred sixty-five square foot commercial building in the BP Business Park District located south of four zero four one Horse Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? All right, council, please submit your vote.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously for the first time considering.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, please cast your vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Just real quick, Mr. Anderson, do, I'm assuming they would like to move forward as the weather hopefully gets and stays nicer?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, um, yes, they are anxious to be going into construction if they can. We did not have any opposition to this with the planning commission.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, please submit your votes.
Yes.
Yes.
Two plus four equals six unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
A motion. Alive, twenty-five city council members.
Sorry.
All right, so, uh, that motion in consider has been made with the second. Um, you want to, uh, just tell me what your votes are?
Yes.
Hang on, I reset it.
Uh, can you submit your votes if you can?
Yes.
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 All right, so we, Mr. Bozen?
Sir.
Uh, Mr. Nichols. All right, so we, um, we have a unanimous, so. All right, thank you. All right, let's go to, um.
Six.
Let's go to six.
Mayor?
Sir?
I can immediately receive file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and sale of company's selling property development fees LLC. The amount of one dollar with a development agreement and a piece five thousand dollar grant upon completion of this loan located east of one zero zero three Dr. Mont Street for the construction of eighteen single family homes.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, is there anyone that would like to speak to, um, eighteen, uh, single dwelling family homes, please? Yes, sir.
Hi, folks. Hello, folks. Uh, my name is Bob Manning. I'm the executive director of the Cedar Valley Home Builders Association. And, um, we love to come before the council, and in fact, just seeing this type of agenda is very, very positive. This is a lot of good things happening in Waterloo. And, um, I'd like to congratulate the mayor, council, and the city staff for working on this stuff. Uh, we've come before you for, for larger houses or new developments, and, uh, but this is also important as infill and intrudently is a part of the circle of real estate, providing a necessary cog that we need in a rural city. So, uh, so I'm kind of just swelling with pride, and I'd like you to all just pat yourself on the back. If you don't, I'm going to catch you after the meeting and pat yourself on the back. Um, but this is very, very positive, and certainly, uh, we're very much in favor of seeing what you're doing when you sit in the bottom of the fields. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, number two is to elevate housing, so, uh, we have a very aggressive agenda to make that happen, so thank you so much for all your work. Loud as well. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, first delivery of seventeen twenty-five hundred. I believe we had a development agreement on this Baltimore field area some time ago. I don't remember how many years, but I believe it's been quite a few years. I would like to know what happened to the development agreement. Was there any penalty paid by the developer that didn't develop? Or did, uh, to me, it looks like the taxpayers have sat and waited for years, and then we get another developer who says they need to do it, and I should hope they are able to do it. Could we have a report on what happened?
Well, can we go back so we can move forward?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, um, yes, this was normally, uh, there was two developers involved that were partnering. Uh, they had a breakup for this site originally. Um, there was an amendment that came back through the city council which took the suddenly portion of the land back. We've now obtained the northerly portion back as well, because the other developers are not moving ahead with it. Um, all of our development agreements are actually written, so that they'll self-terminate within activity over a certain amount of time, so those development agreements have expired. And we are moving ahead with this current project, and this is Panther Builders, um, so the ones that are out there actively building at the Edison School sites, and we're very excited about the second one.
Thank you. All right, um, any other questions on, uh, eighteen homes? Um.
Thank you.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of selling property to the community of Ellis County in the amount of one dollar for the construction of eighteen single family homes and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, this is for Mr. Anderson. So, folks will see that we're, that we're selling this property for a dollar, that we're also giving incentives. So could you just kind of explain what benefits we get, uh, from having these eighteen new housing units come online? Um, and why we decided to go with this incentive package?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, um, so yeah, the city's policy is to sell land for a dollar. With the development in place, which puts forth a certain timeline for, uh, the new housing to happen out there. Obviously, the city of Waterloo will gain new property taxes, but also some utilities being paid out there, garbage fees, other, other activity, as well as a new street being built, uh, particularly for this site, so. And there's a lot of benefits to the city to see this in terms of all the activity, all the fees, increased population, more workers here, more people shopping and bringing businesses here. Um, the infill development policy, um, the five thousand dollars was put in place. You know, a lot of these, uh, these vacant sites, especially these infill sites, a lot of times don't have the water and sewer stubs, so they have to rip up the street and provide infrastructure. So the five thousand dollars per unit was put in to help kind of defray those costs and push for the infill development. The other benefits of the infill development is, for the most part, we already have garbage trucks, sweep sweepers, all that kind of going through these areas, and so.
So we're gonna recoup this incentive package when these are built? Thank you.
Well, I think there was some statistics, Bob, quote me if I'm wrong, I think, uh, around the state of Iowa, we're at forty-two thousand short, uh, with regards to, um, residential units and opportunities and places for people to stay, and so any of these things that we're doing, uh, very good for, uh, the city of Waterloo as well, so. As was echoed, good job by city staff and developers for, uh, investing here.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I, may I ask, uh, Mr. Anderson, a question?
Well, please. Depends what it is.
I know. I'm sure he knows where I'm gonna go.
Favorite football.
I'm sure he knows where I'm gonna go with this one, but, uh, do you believe that the developers will do the road construction? Probably one of the first things?
Yes, um, one of the first steps would be to do the road construction to the middle with the rubber smokes, to know that, so that should help alleviate some of the dirt pile out there.
Okay, that, yep, I knew you knew where I was gonna go, cause I just talked to people again there, and, um, I did say, you know, I knew this was coming up and mentioned it, so they mentioned to me again about that, so if that could get moved, uh, as quick as possible, I think, so they didn't have to look at that, that would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, uh, I think Mr. Bozen and.
A- as the mayor noted, there's a severe need in the, in the state of Iowa, but I'm definitely, the state study of the housing, and I think we have the same need here uh, in the city of Waterloo in terms of needing more housing out here. I think the houses are selling very well out there. Um, and, and of course, there's not a huge amount of lots in the entire city valley, so I think the developer feels very comfortable with the timeline. I, I think they'll actually probably accept it.
We, we have lots that just haven't been planted yet. So, we have property here to continue to build. And anyone else, uh, interested out there, listen, uh, we got some property. Yes, sir?
Um, Mr. Mayor, was there any cost for the previous development agreement here for, towards the city?
Did we, were there any costs that we incurred other than deload taxes?
Um, no, there was not. Um, there was no taxes.
So there was no burden on the taxpayer for any of this?
No, the, this, this site was originally acquired by the city from the Volta Schools as part of our partnership with, working with them with the older school sites and, and practice schools like this.
Perfect, it wasn't taxed.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, are we ready, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well.
We need to do the vote for the prior one, so for the, for the, the.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, so that's approved unanimously. Now, uh, it's Mr. Bozen, so adopting a resolution and what he just said.
No, thank you.
Um, and that was second by, uh, Mr. Childs. And please vote?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that was approved unanimously by the council. All right, can someone do number seven, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, so receiving file proof of publication and notice of public hearing that's for a request by Unity Dark Fiber LLC to sell and convey approximately zero point three four zero acres of sea-owned property located north of two three six five Northeast Drive in the amount of forty thousand dollars for the construction of a telecommunications facility and improving the purchase agreement.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city-owned property north of two three six five Northeast Drive in the amount of forty thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Um, when this came last time, I voted no. I want to completely congratulate, uh, and thank Noel for answering my questions about this. It'll get a lot more clear, and this new deal, I think, makes it a little bit easier for us here to just take it off of our hands. So thank you again, Noel, for your work with us. It's greatly appreciated.
Um, thank you. Uh, so this is a electronic vote, so please. Yes.
Yes.
I know where you stand on this. Sit down. All right, that, uh, approved.
Yes.
That, that approved, uh, unanimously. Next part of that question? Yes, sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a purchase agreement between Unity Dark Fiber LLC and Sea Waterloo for the purchase of city-owned property located north of two three six five Northeast Drive and authorizing.
for the purchase of C O N property located north of two three six five northeast drive and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
That motion has been made with the second. That is an electronic vote, so please state your vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yep. Alright, thank you. That was approved unanimously, so. Uh, number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. And ask for the sale and conveyance of C O N property in the amount of one dollar to Three Stooges LLC for the construction of a new fifty thousand square foot warehouse with a future nine thousand square foot expansion with a minimum assessed value of one million eight hundred thousand dollars. Located at the southeast corner of Levercy Road and Hyper Drive, including minimum assessment and development agreements with tax rebates of five years at fifty percent.
That motion has been made, uh, with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file all written comments.
Uh, that motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of C O N property located in the southeast corner of Levercy Road and Hyper Drive to Three Stooges LLC in the amount of one dollar and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Alright, uh, that is an electronic vote, please. Please state your vote.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, that is, uh, approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement with Three Stooges LLC for the construction of a new fifty thousand square foot warehouse and future nine thousand square foot addition with a minimum assessed value of one million eight hundred thousand dollars and tax rebates of five years at fifty percent. And authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, counsel, electronic vote? Can I issue a vote verbally if you need to?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Alright, that, uh, has been approved. Okay, uh, number nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for sale and conveyance for a lot, make a lot located northeast of fifteen twenty-two West Forest Street to Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity in the amount of one dollar with a development agreement and a grant of five thousand dollars for info housing development.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close hearing?
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of C O N property located northeast of fifteen twenty-two West Forest Street in the amount of one dollar to Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Yes.
I just, I just wanna say how proud I am of Habitat for coming to Waterloo and really shifting and changing our neighbors and in our neighborhoods. Been at a lot of their meetings and really focused on bringing the community together, um, beautifying our neighborhoods. And I can really appreciate it, especially in Church Row and around Church Row as well, so. So, so thank you to Ally and the entire Coro that are doing a good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Alright, um, sir?
Uh, just one thing. So, I'm really happy about this as well. I'd like to see us be a little more aggressive in our six fifty-seven eighty strategy in that area, so that we can get more homes to Habitat.
Alright, we definitely will do our best. Um, definitely doing our best. Okay, um, that is an electronic vote, so please cast your verbal and your electronic. Yes. Alright, that is, uh, approved unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for the construction of a single-family home with five thousand dollar infill housing grant and authorization from the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Has been made with the second. Um, um, counsel, alright, uh, please, uh, cast your votes.
Yes.
Alright, that's, uh, six oh votes, so thank you, counsel. Um, I think we'll. Alright, uh, can someone take, uh, one, two, and three, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First, a resolution approving the participating entity addendum in agreement with U S Bank for the purpose of making available a corporate card, purchase card, and or one card program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Next is a resolution approving changes to the purchasing policy effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. And finally, a resolution approving the award of hotel motel tax council discretionary funds to the North End Arts and Music Fest in the amount of five thousand dollars.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, any questions about these items, counsel? Please, uh, cast your votes?
Yes.
Yes, for the first two, and I abstain for the third one.
Okay. Hmm, is he on the board? Oh, okay, thank you. So, so for number, uh, so number, so one and two unanimously for everyone. Number three, abstention for, uh, Mr. Childs and. Alright, thank you. Uh, let's take, uh, four, five, and six, please. Yes, sir? That motion has been seconded by Mr. Childs. Alright, uh, any questions about these three items, counsel? So, uh, um, twelve point five square feet right away for a thousand dollars. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, yes, I believe the original offer was closer to like a hundred and eighty dollars or something based on the price per square foot. And they did counter with eight thousand. I believe they countered a couple times after that, but they were not bashing her. And the cost of condemnation would be rather verific, and the project is waiting a bit ahead with the grant, so, um, I'm looking at it.
People see that if they just hold out, they're gonna get ten times what we offer.
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, Forest Deliver. I have a question on number four. If the purpose of buying this piece of property, what is going to happen to it?
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Uh, Community Development, um, is working with their home funds. They did a request for proposal, um, that was answered by Rosemont Companies and Mike Higginbotham is a local contact to build four new houses in this area with the home funds. And the city of Waterloo had a lot on the west and the east side of this lot, so we thought it was prudent to work with operation threshold to have the three houses in a row. This is about two blocks north of the Newell Street Houses we built with Hawkeye, and there's actually a fourth lot, um, just developed to the west also in the city of Waterloo. So, it'll be for new home construction.
So, they're, they're houses. So, we're eliminating, eliminating blight and putting, uh, something, uh, that's gonna earn even greater taxable value than it was earning, which is none right now. Um, alright, um, uh, counsel, please, uh, cast your vote?
Yes.
Yes. Noel, thank you. Very good activity in the house, I think. Making sure that we're building houses in every part of the community. Uh, could someone take seven and eight, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. The first one is a resolution approving an early access agreement with D and J Development LLC to allow development activities, including earthmoving and construction of a foundation on Lot Five and access of two Lot Six in track B, while in the Waterloo area and Royal Park Third Edition and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number eight, uh, resolution approving a request for first feelings Inc. for the preliminary plot of Tower Park. Number seven is six lot commercial subdivision located in BP Business Park District and CP Plan Commercial District located south of forty forty-one Horse Drive and who's in the nine also?
No, no, just seven and eight.
Second.
Alright, that motion has been made with the second. Uh, any questions about these two items? Anyone? Counsel? Alright, please cast your votes, counsel.
Yes. Yes.
Alright, that's approved unanimously, six oh. Alright, uh, we have, uh, two other resolutions. Could someone take nine and ten?
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a development agreement with Cedar Crossing Storage LLC with the construction of a new storage facility consisting of no less than twenty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-six square feet and future expansion with a minimum assessed value of one million six hundred eighty thousand, uh, for the first phase located east of thirty-five thirty Barney Avenue including minimum assessment and development agreements with rebate at ninety percent for years one through ten, eighty-five percent for year eleven, and sixty percent for years twelve through fourteen and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And ten is a resolution to amend a real estate purchase agreement with Union at North Crossing LP for the construction of a one hundred eighty unit multifamily development with a minimum assessed value of five million dollars located at thirty-three thirty East Forest Street and one fifty-one, one fifty-three, and one fifty-five Mission Circle, including minimum assessment agreement and property tax rebates of zero percent for years one through four, forty percent for years five through seven, and fifty percent for years eight through nine, and sixty percent for years ten through eleven. Authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents in this new resolution number two zero two two dash five one seven in its entirety.
That motion has been made with the second. Who comments on this?
David Driger, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Uh, comments are both on nine and ten. Uh, and I see this earlier in the, uh, agenda that I, I'm not understanding why we have such a variety of, uh, agreements. Especially the last one with zero percent for years one through four. The increases from there. Usually it's, the higher number is at the beginning of the project and then the lower number toward the end of the contract. Uh, just. It bothers my mind as to all these different ways that we keep doing this. And buying property and giving it away and, um, all these assessment things. Uh, the one also that bugs me is that when you have a hundred and eighty units. Uh, excuse me, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Eighteen units or a hundred and eighty units or whatever, in assessed value of five million dollars. That doesn't make sense to me. You divide that out, that's like twenty-eight thousand dollars a unit. You can't build a garage for twenty-eight thousand dollars today.
Alright, um, Noel, can you kind of get up and speak to, um, these opportunities a little bit, of just a little background? I know we've had a presentation, you know, definitely, um, number ten, but can you walk us through this?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Item number nine, uh, the Cedar Crossing Storage. As you recall, this is, uh, Cedar Valley Cross and it's a group out of the western area that has built a ten-lot industrial subdivision at the South Honda Barney. Uh, just near the highway sixty-three, highway twenty interchange. Um, this is the, uh, the second building, or second project that'll be happening out there. Of the ten lots, um, working with them right now, they probably have eight to nine of them fulfilled for construction activities. Um, essentially that they have spent all the money out there, the city has spent zero dollars developing these subdivisions. They have spent all their money on the road construction, water, sewer extensions, uh, electrical, gas, and all that. This is to, uh, basically make the project out there the same as if the city would have developed the land without the cost upfront for us or the risk. Um, so the tax rebate schedule is based on the value of the land and the value of the project out there and repaying them for the land. So, essentially, it's the same as getting a four dollar for the city of Waterloo. Number ten is a real estate purchase agreement. So, this is back before you. You may recall, we had this on before. It was an amendment to the development agreement. That was a mistake. And by us, it was an amendment to a purchase agreement, so we've changed that to, to correct the, the proper document. The rebates on this one, um, were essentially put together for additional dirt moving activities that we'd like them to, um, take care of out there on behalf of the larger project of, uh, Master Bedada of North Cross. And the hundred and eighty units is based on information we got back from the assessor's office. Uh, these are apartment units, and so it's not seen as individual units. And it was very similar to other projects, um, of that size and scope in the city of Waterloo for value. Correct. So, they'll be applying for the Cura, um, as kind of the standard package, and then the additional rebates that are shown here are for the.
And that, and that's why, uh, Mr. Driger said he didn't understand whether there's zero rebates for the first two years, in case he qualifies for the hearing.
Correct.
They could, they could choose a ten-year standard scale or three years.
That is correct.
So, the way this is, the way that you have this script, and then if they're acting, wanna opt for three years, a hundred percent, is that will change. If you change, you said you go to a ten-year.
We, we believe so, yes.
And I sent you an email last week asking you about number, number, uh, nine. And, and what, based on what the rebates are gonna be, and what is, just redetermining the cost of the land. Yeah, connected sense, so you give you an idea. You've got ten years, ninety percent, and then years eleven to fourteen rebates. What are we paying, how much are we paying for the land?
So, they're doing the project in two phases. This is the first phase, and we're basically dividing up the land, basing the land that they're developing. Um, I believe it's at five dollars a square foot. Uh, I believe is the land cost out there, but I was, I could get that to you if I had my.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate that you do get it to me. Uh, and i- i- in your email to me, you said that we're only there'll be a second phase of this project where you're only giving rebates for the first phase.
Correct.
I mean, and, and in the development agreement, it says, the project for the second phase improvement, so it'll be the subject of a separate development. Or they gotta come, come back on a separate development agreement and ask for.
They went for the other phase separately, yes.
But if you look at the project itself, they're building over here, and then land they're purchasing for the second phase is, isn't that gonna be parking for, for older homes and things like that temporarily?
They're looking at additional buildings there, so we'll have a new minimum assessed value for that site and a new base schedule for that site based on the minimum assessed value.
But we wouldn't be, not repurchasing the land, because the land is.
That is correct. They're just reimbursing them for the first half of the land now with this project. And they're gonna have to build more to have more value out there to reimburse them from the other portion of the land.
So, what is the tax, whatever, then?
The one point six eight.
One point six eight, okay. And my only concern is this, like, carpeting on this, this long-term, this is fourteen years. Is, is how, how we dig ourselves out of, uh, the debt that we're running as far as helping out common for property tax relief, because this is in a, this is being considered a tough.
Correct.
So, none of this money goes to the system, goes to the county, goes to the city, except the tax on the land.
And the debt service level.
It's fourteen years.
Correct.
All right, any other questions? So just really quickly, um, just from Paradise Estates the last time to, uh, to more to Lana, to Church Road, to West Forest, to Gable, to North Crossing, it's good to see activity for housing, which is council, when council goes, and news goes, and city goes. So it's good to see, um, all of this activity. Uh, that is an electronic vote for nine and ten.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and so they were, you know, for both of them or one of them?
I voted no on level ten last time.
Okay. All right, so for number nine, unanimous, uh, and then for number ten, we have one vote with Mr. Bozen. All right, I could someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, no, it's, it's yes, sir.
Um, I move to adopt, uh, moves to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the third time and adopt said order. In order to amending subsection G, the automatic traffic enforcement ordinance.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions, conversation?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
When does this go into, I mean, we, I don't know how the vote goes, but when will this one go into?
So, chief? Who's that? It's one of them. Soon as we get done, soon as there's a third.
As soon as it's published.
When it's published, after this third reading.
Thank you.
How long will it be published? How long does that take? A week or two.
People have a week or two to pay their tickets. Before, I mean, for the extra phase.
All right, um, that is a vote. Please, uh, cast your vote.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that is, uh, unanimous. All right, Mr. Voice.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to exec, executive session on the purchase of real estate pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one dash, or point five, one J.
That motion has been made with the second. Mr. Attorney, we're doing our correct election. All right, thank you. We have a nod of approval by Mr. Peter Peterson, City Attorney. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in exec session. Quick, can we get in?